K L T V sound check, K L T V sound check. K L T V sound check.
Okay, Kelly's waking us all up.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday morning meeting of the V O C C. If you want to join me, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes from last meeting, Commissioner Mortensen.
Good morning. I can tell it's the Fourth of July week.
Yeah.
I did review the minutes of the activities last week, and I moved to approve those minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Any questions, corrections? See none? Call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Before I get into the consent agenda, just to want to point out, we do have a public hearing at 9:30 today. So we'll try and honor, honor that and be on time. Consent agenda, under agreements, contracts, bid awards. Building and planning got a $10,000 grant from the state of Washington. And they put out a bid in painter preservation for historic preservation reconnaissance. But basically what this does is this, this company will look at the granges in our area. And it's a study to determine if they qualify for local register. We have, I don't know, I think they explained yesterday, we have like five different granges that they'll be looking at. Item two, amendment to personal service agreement with ALS Environmental. They do testing at our landfills and our water sewer plants. We're exercising a two-year extension clause in the contract. They gave us an estimate yesterday. We usually spend $50,000 to $70,000 a year on these testings. Contract change orders with Security Solutions Northwest. Security Solutions Northwest is doing some security updates to our Hall of Justice. We meet with them. We have staff that meet with them regularly. And, and there's a couple items that we decided to add totaling 6602. So it'll bring that total amount to 232092. And it's within budget. We're not exceeding budget on that. We're just adding a couple items. Correspondence. We got a letter from Porter Woodland extending their appreciation for us taking on the Cougar restroom facility and getting that reopened. Letter to Karen, I'm going to butcher this, Unruh. Congratulating her on retirement, 28 years of service to Calis County and the Clerk's Department. A letter to Laura Ressit on her retirement, 23 years of service to Calis County in building and planning. We had vouchers in the amount of $5,651,661 and 12 cents. Any questions on any of the consent agenda? Entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented by staff.
We have a motion to approve. Last chance, questions, comments? See none? Call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Motion items, I see public works.
Good morning, Commissioners Savannah Clement, Public Services. Today on motion, we have, we're seeking approval for a larger project. And it involves culvert repair replacements. I have Roger Moore here, one of our staff engineers, to discuss it with the board.
Yes, in January of 22, they, we had a flood event that washed out the end of the culvert. And the shoulder was gone at Rose Valley Road, Mount Post 7.72. Guard rail was, was left suspended with the guard rail post sticking out of, out of the ground. So we did an emergency repair in that same month. And, and got the end of the pipe put back together and the roadway embankment rebuilt. And now we're working through WashDOT and Federal Highways under their emergency relief program to do the permanent repair, which will be a fish passable culvert is what would be required for the final project.
And this is fully funded by Federal Highways as an emergency project. And this is fully funded by Federal Highways as an emergency project. One more thing to note, the original bid amount was significantly higher and we were able to work with a contractor and getting down. Well, I think, what were the amounts that they originally quoted?
Yeah, the original amount was four hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. And the final agreement is for two hundred and ninety-six thousand, sixty-two dollars.
I just wanted to note that because we are also using some of our own crews to do the work to keep those costs down lower, so.
Is this company, construction company also? You call it consulting?
It's a, it's an engineering firm. We're, we're doing the design of the project at this point.
Okay, so at the end of two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, everything will seem to be in.
This is just for the design phase at this point.
That's what I'm asking. This is just a design phase. So then you're going to have to spend another.
Well, we'll, we'll find out what that cost is. I'm, I'm guessing could be upwards towards a million dollars for.
How much did you say?
Could be upwards towards a million dollars for, for a fish passable culvert because the it's a fairly tall roadway fill over the creek, so there's a lot of excavation to do.
I use the ten percent rule for the engineering. More like you'll be lucky to keep it under two million.
Well, we'll see when, when we get to, get to the end of the design phase.
Yeah, well, the important thing, I just needed to know whether that was the design or the construction.
Yes, it's for design.
I, I think at our workshop, we talked about a fish passage because the, the amount was so low, but we have more information now that it's going to be a major, major fish barrier.
And I said construction earlier. I meant reconstruction, so that was, I apologize for that confusion.
No, I appreciate you clarifying that.
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the local agency consultant agreement as has been discussed.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Any questions, comments?
Just wanted a clarification, the, the, the amount of local funds is going to be pretty minimal on this.
Uh, yes, I believe there's I don't know, ten to thirteen percent match.
Okay, that's, that's pretty much what we've been doing for the other fish barriers.
Right.
Yeah, thanks.
Is the current culvert that was there, was it, were fish able to pass through then?
No, it's, it was a fairly steep culvert and it was smooth. So the velocity of the water through the pipe was much more than, than fish could handle.
So there were no fish running up that river through that culvert?
Right, correct.
Um, just a odd question.
So this is, this was a creek though.
It's a creek.
Just a tributary creek. It wasn't the main.
It's, so it's a creek. Is there a hatchery on that creek or was there a hatchery on that creek?
No.
Out on the creek.
No, it's, it's a small, relatively small unnamed tributary to the Calliman River.
So is it, is it, are we having to make all culverts to all tributaries fish passable even if there are no fish running through there? You have to pay for that?
Well, it's fish passable up to the culvert. And if the culvert wasn't there and it was a natural stream, because it'd have a natural stream versus a smooth concrete floor, then the velocity would be such that fish should be able to get up there.
Yeah, I think you're sort of saying there are lots of situations in the county. Are we going to have to pay two million dollars times a hundred, times a thousand?
That's what I'm wondering if, if for every, every time something like this happens, if there's no fish running up those creeks currently, why are we having to pay for fish passage, you know, when we do this reconstruction that it costs so much to meet that particular spec?
Yes, well, uh, the existing culvert is, is in violation at this moment. So, and when we do replace it, then we have to bring it up to standard.
The, the background to the fish barrier removals is a federal court decision interpreting the treaties with the tribes as requiring, you know, where the culverts have blocked the fish passage, we have to restore those runs. Interestingly, that's, that decision covered the treaty tribe regions. Here in, in Southwest Washington, the treaty with the local Indians was never ratified. However, they're still native, you know, and they still have tribal rights. So the state has included plenty of funding, both federal funds as well as state funds that make most of the expense paid for with, with just a relatively modest local match, the ten, ten percent, ten to twelve percent, which is, you know, I mean, it's still a couple hundred thousand, but, but it's been pretty consistent. They've been running about between a million and a half to two and a half million dollars. Because you're, 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 you're not just replacing the culvert. You're actually widening it and, and making it more of a natural setting with a bridge rather than just the, just the pipe. So it is a fairly extensive re redo.
Do, is there a team of people who go out and assess whether or not it's even going to be used by fish?
Well, on Fish and Wildlife's website, they've identified several blockages. And they also have a map of fish use and potential fish use. So they'll show a blockage and a distance upstream of that, which they would say is a potential fish use if the blockage is removed.
There is a layer, I'm sorry, there is a layer on our Epic Max through the Assessor's Parcel Search that will actually show you which streams they've identified as fish bearing or non-fish bearing. So that's a resource too for the public to use, but that's who we utilize that information from is Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah. We, we don't see it every, every time, but often Rock Creek up of, up in.
Tower, Tower Road.
Tower Road was blocked when the mountain came down with all the silt. So there hadn't been fish up there since the eighties, early eighties, when that, that event happened. But then when it, it had the, the rain event and all that came out of there, because it had fish pre to that, then it was treated as a fish buried stream. So then it gets way more expensive.
Yeah, I was just wondering what logic is being applied, you know, to the whole process due to the fact that we're using limited county funds and, but it's all still taxpayer money. In the end, it's still coming out of, out of our pocket. So I just wanted to see what, understand what the process was as to what we defined as a creek or a stream that is fish bearing and that the fish needed navigate through if they weren't before. I, you know, unless we, unless we introduce fish to that, to that creek, the, the native fish, the natural fish that are in the river aren't just going to just start going up there if they haven't been going up into that, into that area. So I was just, just curious as to what the, the, the procedure and the logic was behind that. So, thank you.
We, I think we pretty much get told and, and as to the logic for how they come up with it, I'm not sure there's a lot there.
Well, part of it is generated by the condition of the, the culvert. I mean, we don't have to. We don't have to replace perfectly solid culverts.
Right.
It's, it's when they deteriorated after, after time. So it's the older culvert center.
Or in an emergency situation that we have to go in and repair it and now we're following the new guidelines.
We have had situations where we've come to Fish and Wildlife and shown them a culvert that there wasn't that much habitat upstream or there's no way that fish can get there. And then they've, they've gone ahead and allowed us to do a, a non-fish culvert.
Yeah, well, you can, if there's reasonable evidence, you can push back in that sense, Roger just described.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
One of the interesting things that I've noticed since I've been representing the county on the Fish Recovery Board is that when significant barriers are removed, the fish return almost, you know, within the first year, they're, they're always searching for, for habitat. And that's kind of a, a, a new element of this, of the science. Because we all were taught when we were little kids that the, that the salmon have this instinct to always go back to their original spawning ground. Well, dams that have been there for a hundred years have been removed and they come back almost instantaneously. Habitat's not always that great because it takes a little while for the conditions behind the old dam to, 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 to help out. But, I mean, it's just amazing that they're constantly searching for a new habitat, so.
Okay. See no others? Call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Health and Human Services.
Good morning, Gina James, Health and Human Services. We have two items on the agenda this morning. These, both of these contract amendments are related to criminal justice treatment account funding. So we received that funding from the healthcare authority. It's set aside in the state budget and outlined in statute to be used for those involved primarily in drug court and to provide some substance use disorder treatment and support services so that they can finish their program successfully. Item number six is a contract amendment with Columbia Wellness where we're adding the second year funding. So our, our state contract is a two-year contract. Our provider contracts were one year. So we're adding that second year of funding. So for Columbia Wellness, we're adding the fifty thousand dollars for this fiscal year. And item number seven is the, an amendment with Family Health Center. This one, we're adding a hundred and five thousand dollars. There's a little bit to close out last fiscal year and then additional allocation for a second year funding. They have been serving a few more clients this year, so they've are, we've allocated a little bit more to help support that increase.
So Gina, with the Family Health Center, are they providing the, the UA analysis for, for the client, the, the folks going through drug court?
Both, both providers provide UA services. Yep, so we've, between the two, over a thousand UAs have been supported with this funding. And again, it's to support those individuals to keep up with their drug court program. This is considered a pair of last resort, so they will charge Medicaid or an individual's insurance until they can't anymore. So Medicaid, for example, will only cover about thirty UAs a year. Drug court requires many more than that. And so this funding then can kick in to help support, to finish that out.
So you mentioned a thousand UAs. You're not suggesting there are a thousand people in drug court? No.
No, no, and, and I, we'd have to talk to drug court about their total numbers between these two contracts. We're talking about forty-three unduplicated people between these two contracts.
Is this one of the reimbursement things that they come up with a dollar amount based on the, the volume? I mean,
Yeah, that.
Do so many and then it gets submitted.
Yeah, there's, part of the funding is state drug court funding. And I, that, we've had sort of a set amount for a number of years with the state drug court funding. And then there's a little bit of, they call it CJTA base funding that they add in as well. I'm not sure what formula they use to, to determine the exact amount for us, but it's been the same amount for several years.
Can you tell me the rationale behind the discrepancy or the difference between number six and number seven in terms of dollar amounts?
So in terms of Club, or Family Health Center with the higher dollar amount, they're serving more individuals. So they've so far, well, I guess through May, served about thirty-one unduplicated people and Columbia Wellness about twelve.
And I'm puzzled a little bit because Family Health Center is also involved with giving out the syringes. So on the one hand, they're giving out syringes. On the other hand, they're getting paid for, for checking on people who are addicted.
They, they do, do both services, yes.
Yeah. And is this for UAs only or it covers other kinds of things?
Other treatments. So we also, the, the primary treatment services is outpatient treatment, both group and individual. So that's kind of the primary service. So we've, they've provided a thousand forty-two units of outpatient treatment service to those individuals as well as Columbia Wellness has started doing inpatient residential treatment with this funding as well. So they've done about fifty-four days of that treatment service as well. There's a whole list of treatment, S U D treatment services that they can provide. Those are the most common that they bill us for.
Yeah, I'm puzzled a little bit, twelve with Columbia Wellness and thirty-one with Family Health Center. How is, how, how is that decided? Who goes to whom?
Individuals choose where they want to seek treatment from. So then one, when they're doing their intake with an individual and they learn about, oh, oh, you're in drug court. Oh, you're, you're seeking S U D treatment, then CJ, they may be able to bill CJTA for some of those services.
Do we have others who are interested in, in providing the service?
Probably, yep. I, we, you know, next year will be the end of our two-year contract. And I think we'd probably go out to bid again, maybe this winter to see if there's additional providers that are interested.
But these are the, the only two currently?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
We also work with drug court. Drug court receives some of the funding as well.
And then I'm, I know I've had the devil of a time and I'm not sure if my requests or thinking is unreasonable, which is money is a fungible thing. And I've been around enough to know that time cards and things are moved around between different contracts and overheads are moved around for for convenience of, of, of the provider. How do you, how do you audit this or who does the audit in?
We do once a year, so we'll go and audit, we'll pick a random three months and really dig into the backup documentation. For these specific services, they are a set fee for the service. And so we verify that the service that they build us for has been provided by viewing the case note for that client. And so we'll look, most of the providers have electronic health database systems that they use. And so we'll ask them to provide us the case note for that day for the service that they build us to verify it was the same service, that it was the same day, the same time, all of those things.
That's just the paperwork though, right? You're checking the paperwork consistency. You're not going to the, to the client and saying, did you on July two go to Family Health Center and get this treatment?
We have not done it that way before, no.
Would you think that's too onerous?
I think it would, I don't know, I might have to put some thought into that and look at our contract and, and kind of see. We pay for just a part of their treatment services overall. The client may not really even know that they've billed CJTA versus their insurance, for example. But I could put some more thought into that.
This is a classic example of how it is just really hard to, to verify anything. Even though I, I, I don't have any sense that we have an issue here. If you look at the sort of high level statistics in the nation, the, the amount of cheating that goes on in these programs is a sizable amount of money. I don't know where it starts and how we stop it.
Yeah. Well, I think probably the key thing is close communication with Superior Court that operates the drug course program. that operates the drug course program. Um, the success measure, I think by definition, uh, are the graduates who make it through the program. That benefits from these various, um, treatment programs. One of the things that we have discussed is although they have graduations what, at once a quarter, um, we don't know the long-term effects because it generally is a two-year program. And we've talked about the fact, how do we know that the drug court is, is long-term successful? We have the testimony and we get the testimony every time we raise the questions. And, uh, those who are successful are very proud of the success. And we, we don't have a good understanding of those who fall by the wayside and, and, uh, go back. But, um, that, that, that presents probably a, a totally different, kind of investigative program to follow up on that.
Yeah, I, I encourage you to think about how you might go about the end-to-end verification. And, uh, I, I don't think it has to be checking a hundred percent of the items. It's the statistical sampling that you basically do.
Okay.
And that I probably think it's a method I try to apply to all the other, uh, all the other programs you administer.
It s- seems to me, and we, we have seen reports from the courts before that it's not a one-hundred percent successful program. No hu- human endeavor, it really ever achieves that hundred percent success rate. Um, but it's been difficult to, to identify long-term. Because once they leave the program, once they've quote graduated, they're free to move about the country and it's hard to follow up. And they may go, and they go to California and we never hear from them again and they might backslide. We just don't know, but, um.
The, the interesting thing about drug court is that they actually have a handle on, on the individual. And part of the agreement can be a, uh, an annual, uh, check-in of some kind. It's hard to reinforce, uh, to enforce. I wouldn't worry about that. If drug court has been really successful, the people will be happy to report. I'm doing fine year one, I'm doing fine year two. And maybe, uh, you can build over several years a pretty good understanding of the program.
Yeah, and drug court's really the best to come and speak to, to their overall program. This particular funding is kind of a, a piece of the bigger picture in terms of the whole drug court program.
Yeah, I think I'm leaning on you a little bit because, uh, I, it, it's hard to get people to check on their own homework. And, uh, there'll be a thousand and one excuses why they don't want to do it. And if it's only if you care enough that you're doing the right thing, that you actually will go ahead and do that. Uh, I'll give you an analogous situation, which is high school. We, we, we get the metrics, stupid metrics like graduation r- rate. And it's like, that doesn't mean anything. What does mean something is if you can take a look at your high school graduates five years after graduation and maybe up to twenty years after graduation, who started their own company, who is still employed and who did not go through drug court. You know, it's just metrics that they don't really want to keep. Uh, because I think it would be rather inconvenient at the moment.
Gina, can we take these two motions together? Or do we need to have a separate motion?
I was gonna suggest since they're contract extensions for the same thing, if, if you want to take them together, I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, it, it's also nine-thirty, so I know we want to-
Yeah.
To, to move, get going. So I'll go ahead and, and make the motion that we approve the contract amendments with Columbia Wellness and Calis Family Medic, uh, Health Center for the use of CJTA funds as described by staff.
Okay, we have a motion to approve both six and seven. Any questions for the questions? Yeah, I want to say something else. I-
Yeah.
I will go ahead and approve, but I, I, I'm always nervous when we a priori compartmentalize this chunk of money for this and this chunk, uh, for this person, this chunk of money for here, when we don't really know what the next year's dynamics are. Maybe Columbia Wellness, uh, uh, attracts more clients, but we have to tell them, no, you can't go there. There's no money. You gotta go here. So we've reduced, uh, flexibility. In any event.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Call for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Gina.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, while Kathy's getting set up, let me run through something real, real quick. Uh, you know, we have a lot of different advisory committees at the county and, and they're all listed on our, our website. And most of them are pretty, pretty simple. You want to be on it, you fill out a form and you do it. And, uh, uh, the Board of Health has other, other requirements that, that come down through the WAC that were, uh, quite frankly, we missed. So we have to redo the, the Board of Health appointments. And we have a, a new application that should be on the website to, tomorrow. And, uh, so those applications, we open till August eighth, two thousand twenty-four. They're due August eighth, two thousand twenty-four. It's a different application than, than our other committees. It has some questions that the WAC says you need to ask these, these people. We choose to do it on the application instead of bringing, uh, having it in here. And then interviews will be held August twentieth in this room at ten AM and we'll go over those applications with the applicant and make decisions at that point in time. And my sincere hope is apologies to the, to the people that did apply, but I'm hoping that they would put an application back in because I felt there were, we had qualified people and, uh, we'll get there. Okay, with that, Kathy will move into the public hearing.
Okay. Kathy Fun-
Oh, just, just one thing, I'm sorry. Those who were on the Board of Health the prior year remain the active, uh, members of the Board of Health until the new elections.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kathy Fun Baxter, Finance Director. Um, I'm here today, um, to present a budget amendment for the two thousand twenty-four budget. Um, we've previously had workshops, um, to discuss the budget amendment with the commissioners in, uh, public meeting last Wednesday. Um, and so, um, I'll just give a, if it's all right, I'll give a few highlights, uh, major highlights. On the general fund, um, one of the areas that we are making adjustment for is because we closed two collective bargaining agreements, um, in the past few months. And we needed to allocate the budget for those, um, agreements. Um, we had corrections, uh, for estimates in the original budget, um, both in the revenue and expense categories. We had, um, a grant, um, for the coroner's office for both revenue and expense for some equipment. Uh, we had ARPA funds that were allocated, um, by the commissioners, uh, for parks that was approved, um, previously approved. And in total, all adjustments for the general fund net out to a four thousand, uh, reduction in fund balance.
There's a lot of moving pieces.
Yeah, a lot of moving lines.
But when you get to the bottom line, we're, we're talking a four thousand dollar difference from what we initially set in budget.
Right, correct. And then for other funds, the highlights, uh, I'll go over most of those. Um, and the Rural Public Fund Facilities Fund was revised on the revenue estimates. Uh, we revised beginning fund balance. Um, this allows us to provide for some additional awards this year, um, for a total of about two million dollars that we did previously. Uh, we revised our revenue for opioid, um, based upon receipts to date, which was about a one-point-five-million-dollar adjustment. Uh, we also had ARPA funds that were awarded, um, allocated and awarded for the water sewer meter replacement of five hundred and fifty thousand. And we also had a budget amendment in our solid waste fund, uh, to, um, for six-million-dollar commitment to the PUD for a methane budget project, methane project. So those are the highlights of those items in the other funds. There's many other adjustments, but they net out to, um, uh, revenues and expenses equaling, so. That's, that's my recap of the budget amendment that we're presenting.
If the public was to take one of these and look at it, it looks pretty intimidating, but because there's just a lot of moving parts. But the overall difference on, on all of them are, are, we're very close to what we said we were gonna be.
Yeah, other than some of them, uh, revising estimates of revenues.
So considering, uh, and, uh, a total employment of around six hundred individuals, many of whom have gone through contract negotiations and settled for, you know, colas and, and other, and other adjustments. We anticipated a certain amount of adjustment. We missed it by about four grand, which is, which is pretty doggone good. And we had ample supplies in our reserves to, to handle that, so.
Correct, correct.
It is-
And to maintain our reserves at a level that you have in your finance, um, policies.
So by, by law, we, we have to maintain, uh, an eight percent reserve. But most accountants prefer it to be-
In excess of that, yes.
Eight percent is a little bit more than eight percent. It's about one month cash flow.
Right.
And, uh, they prefer two months. That's a little bit more difficult to get, but, get to, but, uh, but we've been managing for quite some time. We've, can handle those, those, uh, adjustments. But the state requires that we show it in a public meeting that we made the adjustment to the budget.
Correct.
Okay.
And making, making your budget amend amendments, we were doing them pretty much quarterly. Um, and so it also helps to provide more clarity in, in looking at financial reports, budget to actual.
In fact, it's along those lines for my next question or two. Uh, how many amendments have we had to two thousand twenty-four if we include?
This, this is our second amendment for two thousand twenty-four.
And so you try to do it quarterly and during, like at the end of today, when, when we pass this, then you're still collecting amendments going along. And sometime before the new, but, new, uh, budget amendment, you're still managing departments and groups to the current amended budget of the day, right?
Yes, yes. And so we're preparing, we present quarterly, uh, financial reports comparing budget to actual and present those to the commissioners. And so that, that also makes informed decisions about what budget amendments are needed or anticipated.
So for example, one of the issues that we've been looking at in work, workshops and, and, uh, re- referring to, um, other, other agencies is a discussion of what to do at the, the lower end of the Tootle River, where we've had a tremendous amount of erosion and infill and, and we, we're looking at a road replacement because of erosion, very serious challenges. And we, we've asked some advice from the Conservation District and our, our chairman has been working with them on that. They gave us a nice detailed s- set of suggestions, uh, underlining almost all of them was you need a geo, uh, geotechnical expert to do the, to do the actual plan design. If we decide to do something like that, we can make that decision whenever, you know, we agree that that's appropriate and we can authorize the spending to be done. But at some point during the year, we have to have that included in a budget amendment under state law. Yeah. And you mentioned four times a year, we try to do the budget amendments. We actually do it five times.
Yeah, we do one final, one final-
We go into the next year and we have to adjust it. Uh, w- one, one, uh, year, we actually amended a bu- a budget that was a four or five years old because we discovered a, a change in, in accounting for the landfill. And the legal re- recommendation was, no, you treat it like it is a, an asset owned by the general fund. And then we have to go back and amend the general fund. And it went back to, to the, to the beginning of it. And, um, so it's a, it's a, it's a living document to, to be sure.
Yes.
And it gives us the flexibility and yet it's a public document that people need to know. They can follow the movement of funds.
Any other questions from us? Okay, we'll open public hearing for any questions, comments from the audience or online. See anybody online? No. See none? Close the public hearing. Mr. Chairman, I would, I, I move that we approve the local, the, the local, no, that's the wrong one. I move that we approve the, uh, budget amendment as has been presented. Okay, we have a motion to approve the, excuse me, budget amendment as presented. Any other questions? See none? Call for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thanks, Kathy. Before I get into, uh, public comments, I wanted to comment on, on one thing we did because I thought it was, I found it extremely interesting, uh, last Wednes- last Wednesday, what, whatever that date was, at our two-thirty workshop, we had Robert Sudar in to give us a presentation on, uh, the Columbia River Basin and, and fish and stuff. And it was, I'm, I'm not a person that goes out and fishes and, and stuff like that, but it was e- extremely interesting to hear, uh, hear about that. If you have, I would suggest if you want to take the time and it's ninety minutes, he, we went for ninety minutes. He gave a great presentation and you will learn, uh, a great deal about, about how the, how the fish work and operate within our region. And, and we think of our region, of course, as being around here, but really it's a multi-state region. It runs into Idaho and Wyoming and how it all migrates. And I just thought he did a wonderful job and it was very educational. And if you have the time and you want to learn a little bit about, even if you're not a fisherman, you might learn, uh, kind of how that, that system works. He did a great job. So that's a little plug for his work from last week.
That's available on our website.
Yep, yeah, our Wednesday, last Wednesday meeting, two-thirty, and it's about ninety minutes worth of time. With that, open the public comment. Do we have any? Did you want to talk a little bit about, uh, Commissioner Weber, uh, kind of alluded to it. And we had the Calis Conversa- Conservation District. We have that, that problem out on Tootle Park Road with erosion of the bank and it's threatening our roadway. And as Commissioner Weber mentioned, uh, we're engineering a replacement road for that if we have to, if we have to. But we asked the Conver- I met with the Conver- Conservation District out there and I can't remember when, it's been a while. And just ask them to look over and kind of give us an idea of what could be done. If, if we had the funding, we had the proper approvals, what kind of things could we do? And he gave us quite a few, uh, different things to look at. And I, and, and I just got it yesterday and I haven't had a chance to, um, prove everything. But I thought he did a, a, a great job on this thing. Gave us some options, whether we can get the approvals and the funding to do it is another question. But I think it's, it's something to, to work with Army Corps and Ecology and all those people with.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's several issues here. Maybe the one at the highest level issue is exactly what obligation does the government have to control the meandering of the river? And I don't know the answer to that. I do know that at some point, if it takes out the, of, of the road, I think that's an obligation we do have. I do know that at some point, if it takes out the, of, of the road, I think that's an obligation we do have. That, uh, it's one of those public things. It's even in the Constitution, post in roads. And of course, I'm stretching it a little, but the, the philosophy's in there. Once we accept that, uh, it may be easier to justify finding a solution. And, uh, you're right, the Conservation District gave us several solutions, what potential solutions, they are, they seem to center around requiring that geotech analysis. Is this a good time for us to suggest that we, uh, find, find the, the money to proceed ahead with the geotech analysis? I don't think getting information is a bad thing in general. You might not use it, but it's all, it's there.
Actually, I, I don't think that's a bad, I did all, because if you have that, I've talked before, I'm, I'm, and I, I, I'd have to look at my calendar to get the exact date, but I'm participating in a meeting with Department of Ecology and, uh, Army Corps of Engineers to talk about the area up there. And I'll certainly take this piece down. But if, if you had a document like that, you'd say, and we've had this study done and you could do this. These are the type of things that you could prob, probably do the easiest. I think that's just another, if you want to put it this way, another arrow in your quiver.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that and I, to looking at that.
Kelly, Kelly, I'm curious, um, we did have an employee looking at this for quite a few years and that position was staffed through our office. And he's left the county, but that position is still funded?
Uh, that was part of the budget amendments that Kathy talked, so she was moving that to, uh, the general, back to the general fund, I believe.
So, so Dennis, you're a half hour late.
Well, it's in the general fund and that's, you know, that's, that's, uh, a, appropriate.
Wha, what you're, you were looking at is funds available to get a geological study?
Right.
Is that where you're headed? Yeah.
But the, but the money is available. I mean, it's, yeah, it's in the general fund, so.
So I, yeah, I, I, let's go do it. Find out what it's going to cost us.
Public Works isn't in here, but it might be a, a place to start to have an RFP for what we want, drafting of what we want. We have them in this afternoon. We can, we can chat with them about that.
Oh, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I do want to comment again positively, the Calis Conservation District always impresses me.
Yeah, the, I don't know that they get a lot of, uh, public, but if you go look at the stuff they do, they do, it's pretty impressive. And they're not a, not a huge group, uh. Uh, and I always refer to, because one of the most visible ones, if you go up and off a tower road, look at the Rock Creek, uh, there was a house when that all came out. There was a residence that sit by that and it really, uh, destroyed a lot of the, the bank down into that. And the Conservation District went up there and did, in my estimation, a phenomenal job of, of restoring that and, and shoring that up. And, and I think they have a, uh, they have a great knowledge base there and a, and a lot of talent for doing things. And there, that's just one area. They've done all kinds of things up and down the, the Calis and different areas that, that do real well, so.
They've even dabbled in the Kalama River, uh, Camp Kalama, which has a new name. Um, they were losing quite a bit of property and, uh.
Not unlike Tootle Park issue, only a much smaller scale.
Yeah, much smaller scale, same thing, much smaller scale and.
Cutting away the bank.
Indifferent in the sense that this was protecting private property and I, that, that's where I, 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 I'm happy we did it. I don't want to have to justify how it would, uh, what the rationale is there because r- rivers do their thing and fighting nature takes a lot of effort. And whose responsibility is that comes up to mind. But ignoring all that, I'm, I'm quite happy with what, what they did. And it does improve the fish habitat along there while stabilizing the property. They lost, the folks there lost, uh, a, uh, horizontal depth of.
It was a whole row for, for.
Fifty feet, a hundred feet. I mean, it was just an enormous amount of property. Same thing like at the Tootle where you can see at the opposite bank now from, from the gun range. It was like, that's where the river used to be.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, with that, I would wish everybody a happy and safe fourth and, uh, we will adjourn.